Dr. Harrell, you want to come up?
Good evening, Madam President, members of the board. We, based on state statute, we are required to have a public hearing any time a school district chooses to start the school calendar more than 10 days prior to the first Monday in September. So, the public hearing is designed to be solely on the start date itself. Later in the meeting, we'll also have some conversation about internally what is in the calendar, if there are any questions there. But in order to meet statute, we do have to have a meeting on that.
Is there anyone in the audience that's here to speak of the, to the public hearing, to the topic of the 2014-2015 calendar?
We would simply need approval to start at 10 days prior to, so if the board is comfortable with the start date.
We'll vote on that later. I think this is just the public hearing to receive input.
Thank you.
Thank you. The public hearing is adjourned and we'll call the regular board meeting to order. Let the record reflect that we're short two board members tonight. Unfortunately, Dr. Frederick is down with the flu and Mr. Lee is at the governor's State of the State address, so and we also have another staff member there as well, so. We have several? Okay. But if you'd join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, I'm very happy to announce that we have several special recognitions. We've been trying to get several of these students recognized for several months now, and in December, we had a snow day, and in January, we had a snow day on those days. So, without further ado, I'll, Dr. Harrell? Okay, Mr. Schmidt.
Ms. Callan, members of the board, it's exciting to get the opportunity to celebrate. Each year, we have so many remarkable accomplishments on behalf of our students. What's happening tonight is the opportunity to recognize some, some both individual and collective efforts on behalf of the students. And also, I want to, we'll have the opportunity to see the adult who's working with those students, and we get to celebrate them as well, because these are no small accomplishments. So, to not delay, I'd like to introduce the coach of the Glendale High School golf team, Ron Yocum.
I don't need the applause. I'm here to introduce state champion Sun Jung. Our year started out with a course record at Marshfield, shot a 67, and we bookend that with a conference champion, district champion, sectional champion, state champion. It's really hard to do that in any kind of golfing event, to win and win and win and win, but she's a pretty talented individual and even a better person. So, I would like to have a round of applause for Sun Jung. Come on up.
If you'd like to come, yeah, if you'd like to come up in front of the board, we'd like to shake your hand, so.
Coach, did you have a major impact on her performance?
She was pretty good before I.
Congratulations.
Way to go again, congratulations.
Sun, I have a question for you. Are you, what year are you this year? So, you'll be back next year.
Good.
Good, good. We'll be looking forward to it.
We expect to see you next year, too. And thank you for representing Glendale and Springfield Public Schools so well. We appreciate it.
What is your favorite course in town? River Cut, that's what I thought.
Give lessons.
Patience, patience first.
Congratulations. To continue the show for Glendale, Glendale's tradition in swimming and excellence in that avenue continues. And so, I'd like to introduce Coach Steve Boyce. He gets to share about a state champion as well. Coach?
I want to make Will come up here and stand with me, because he looks so good. This is Will Brand. Will is a senior and is finishing his career here. He finished at our state meet by winning the 200 freestyle and the 100 butterfly, which is a pretty exciting time to be, make that state championship, something we've been working towards and something he's been working towards for a long time, especially that 100 fly win. They've kind of been his favorite event for a number of years. And I would say, watching Sun and knowing the level of work that she has put in and knowing the level of work that Will has put in, there were times over the course of our season where we had practice in the morning before school. He was in a physical fitness class lifting weights, first block. We would have, he would go to a personal trainer, weights in the afternoon, and come swim again in the evening. And so, there were days when he would hit four workouts in a day, and when you get that many workouts and that kind of work, load going, and still keep up with your academics, you also get a body like this, so it's a pretty cool deal. Will has signed his national letter of intent to stay here in Springfield at Missouri State University, and should be a very exciting time for him. So, congratulations, Will.
Congratulations.
Way to go.
Will, I just have one question for you. I swam the 100 fly for Glendale back in the dark ages. What was your state winning time?
50.7.
Yeah, good.
What was your time, Dr. Frederick?
I'm sure it was well over a minute.
Congratulations again.
The opportunity to continue on with excellence is another program that seems to be a perennial power, if you will, in the student television market. So, I'd like to introduce Mr. Gary Moore, who will be introducing Hillcrest HTV.
Well, thank you, and we're glad to be here to recognize a program that's done very well throughout the years. Our group of students did a Home in Heartland, homeless in the Heartland show last year. It was on, it was telecast in town here, and it got national recognition, recognition. So, I'd like to have Dave Davis come up with our students, and he'll introduce them in the exact award.
What was the name of the show? I knew he was going to miss it. Hi, thanks for having us back. If the students would come up, that, we have five of the nine who created this program. They spent three months. It was their idea, and it took us quite a while to sort out all the players and get characters, and we wanted to kind of put a face on some of the homeless youth, and I think they did that. It's interesting, on October 12th, we will celebrate the 25th anniversary of the first HTV magazine, and I think in the 25 years, this was probably the best HTV magazine. So, I'm going to ask Savannah Stephan, who was the reporter, who one day last March, recorded 48 voice tracks for this show. She was the only reporter on the show to speak on behalf of the students.
Hi. Well, first off, I would just like to thank the school board for allowing us to have this program. A lot of journalism programs aren't allowed to talk about the things that we get to talk about, and we just feel pretty blessed to be able to talk about the things that we do. So, this particular show that we did, a lot of journalism is reciting facts and information, and it was really interesting for us to be able to get past that and be able to let these homeless youth tell their story and give them a voice. And that was so, so powerful. And it's hard for us, I think today especially, whenever you have a wind chill of negative degrees, to go out and you see, on the way here, I drove by and saw homeless youth holding up signs. And so, it's hard for us, I think, and will stick with us forever, the show that we did. So, but thank you so much for.
Will you introduce your other?
Oh, are my other teammates? Yes. This is Cody House. Sorry, Coach was supposed to do that.
Oh, that's okay. It's nice coming from you.
This is Cody. He was our webmaster. And Kara, she actually did some of the interviews, too, with a photographer. John Harmon was a photographer, and Kelsey, she was our anchor and also a photographer.
Congratulations, and if you'll come in front of the board, we'd like to shake your hand.
Are you seniors now? So, you're going to put together another show this year?
Nope. Way to go, guys. Congratulations. Congratulations? Thank you. Congratulations. How many of you are seniors? Okay.
And I'd like to mention that the show was submitted by Dr. Quinn for the award, and I believe it's still available on your website, is that right, Coach? HTVbuzz.com, so you can check it out. So, thank you very much for the opportunity to celebrate these young people and look forward to bringing some more to you in the future. Thank you.
Thank you very much, and congratulations. And we also like to know that you may leave. We know that you're busy students and have.
Mr. Davis, Mr. Davis, Mr. Davis, Mr. Davis. Mr. Davis, Mr. Davis. Yeah, signs of retirement is to forget. I just want you to know that.
One more round of applause.
There we go. For the board's information, Mr. Davis is teaching part-time at Hillcrest and retired, so. At this time, I'd like to take this opportunity, because this is Board of Education Week, recognizing the board as far as their, your wonderful jobs, high-paying jobs. And anyway, this is a proclamation from the Office of the Governor. By the way, a reminder, we're going to see him tomorrow out at JD Dow. Proclamation. Whereas, a system of quality public education is essential to the future of our state and nation, and whereas, the people of Missouri have a long tradition of support for public education in their local school districts, and whereas, local school boards are the ultimate expression of the unique American institution of representative governance of public school districts, and whereas, local school boards acting on behalf of and in close connection with the people of their communities, chart the direction of education in their communities, and whereas, local school boards serve as the key community advocate for children, youth, and public schools. Now, therefore, I, Jeremiah W.J. Nixon, Governor of the State of Missouri, do hereby proclaim January 26th through February 1st, Saturday, 2014, to be School Board Recognition Week in Missouri, and urge all Missourians to recognize school boards as they strive with their communities to improve our public schools through quality leadership. The testimony thereof, I have hereon to set in my hand, et cetera. So, anyway, I want to congratulate, and also, I really appreciate working with you. This will be my last opportunity to thank you for this, and so, I am going to give you a certificate that I know you're going to put on your wall and frame it, and hopefully hold it true to your heart. Okay. Thank you very much, everybody.
Well, on behalf of the board, I would like to thank you for the recognition, and I think that we are uniquely positioned in Springfield with seven very unique, but I think very talented people that bring a lot of intelligence, a lot of energy, a lot of insight to our work as board members. So, it's certainly an honor for me to serve alongside of these individuals, and we have a staff and students, we just saw several of them, that make us look good, so we're always glad about that, so it's a good partnership. Moving on in the agenda, are there any modifications to the agenda? Okay. Going on to the president's report. I really don't have a lot to report. I was, attended the Missouri School Boards Association Board Retreat last weekend, and it was led by one of our retired professionals, Anita Kissinger, who did a wonderful job in leading that board through continuous, their first, their first strategic planning under the Baldrich model and our desire at that level to use continuous quality improvement to inform our work. So, it was really a good weekend. Of course, Mr. Lee was there representing us as well, so. And then, several of us were at the Every Child Promise press conference this morning. I think it was very well-attended. I think highlighted just the energy and the momentum that is out in the community right now to really address the needs that are, that are surrounding our children who are zero through six, and in preparing them and getting them ready to be prepared to come to kindergarten. So, certainly, a lot of our staff were there, board members. Dr. Ritter played an important role on the steering committee, so we look forward, we had a report, I think, was it just a couple, yeah, it was just two weeks ago, from that steering committee, but certainly, our role in moving that forward will be part of upcoming month's discussion. So, are there any other reports from the board in terms of things that you've been doing out in the community?
Good. Difficult, but actually, it was a great, great atmosphere over there, great games, and read a lot of press in other areas, you know, covering high school sports, and it was, the praise was pretty, pretty high indeed for how well-attended it was and how good the fans were and how excited those kids were to come to an arena and play in a tournament that was that well-put on, so very impressive.
Anyone else that I think to share? Before I move on to Dr. Ritter's report.
Hey, last week, first full week of school in about a month. So, I went, I went to several. I went to several schools on Friday, Robertson, wonderful what's going on there as far as the community school, the atmosphere there, second to none. I mean, it's a home to those kids, and it's really, really awesome, and it's evolving. It's a slow process, but it's evolving, and I like the flexibility they have, you know? And then, also at York, really wonderful things happening at York with Laura. And basically, the main thing I was checking for, though, was are the kids really anxious to be back? Are they tired after five days of school? And the energy level was very, very high, so I think they were really wanting to be there. I think the parents more so than the kids, but it was really, really a good experience. In front of you, you have samples of things that are going to be given to the salute tomorrow, tomorrow night in Jeff City. And this here, the, I'm going to read this. By the way, Teresa, why don't you step up here and explain what this is, rather than me reading it? Okay, why don't you explain this?
As you know, we have the legislative salute tomorrow night, and Springfield Public Schools is the featured display, so we've been working for the past few months on developing that 20-by-20 display. And our theme will play off of the Learning is Personal marketing campaign that we've been doing. So, what you have in front of you are a one-gigabyte flash drive that we will be giving some of the people we interact with tomorrow night, and it's loaded with our award-winning video, the Learning is Personal video, so they can view that at their convenience later and share that with others. And then, there's a handful of the marketing brochures that you can use for communicating about the district. It highlights what makes us unique from other school districts in the state.
And who did most of that work on the brochure?
We worked on that through our department and hired an outside graphic designer to create the design for us.
So, hopefully, those that can make it tomorrow night, stop by and get involved. All right. Another thing I want to mention is, at your table is the lead article in The Economist from last week. Now, the reason I brought that out, and I want to make a public statement about it, is that in the article, as you read through it, you're going to see that it walks through, really, the employment picture from the beginning of, really, the 19th century until now, and really, a lot of ag workers, 20% or maybe even higher, down towards just 2%, but really, what the picture is, is this. Think about where we're at as far as our educational program. Think about what's going on in our classroom, the engagement, the workshops that are going on, and things like that, innovation, and that's happening in our system. When you really get down to it, and you're reading the article, and you're getting toward the end of the article on the first front of the page there, there's things they highlight that are critical. One is that basically, education is the most critical thing that's going to drive employment in the future. Technology has taken a lot of jobs, and to move, and technology's taken jobs that people could get by with without education. And so, now, education drives the future, and it's very exciting. The critical piece there that you're going to see in the article are two focused things there. One is innovation, the other one is early childhood. And they point out that early childhood is really very, very critical. And of course, this is a business magazine, and they're seeing it as the only way to go as far as United States is concerned. I'm really, this is really a response to the global type of environment. And so, really, it's a global challenge, and it's really something that we and Springfield Public Schools, I think, are on track to do that. So, we have a strategic plan in place, we have initiatives that we need to look at, we need to be able to budget accordingly, and then eventually, when the budget's all set down, that needs to be our target. And so, I just thought I would bring that to your attention, and hopefully, you can enjoy it and take it on as a challenge, so. Anyway, that's all I have at this time.
I do have several speakers that have signed up, but they all want to speak about non-agenda items, so that portion of the meeting comes at the end of the meeting. Are there any, is there anybody here to speak on agenda items? Okay, great. Then we'll move on to the information section, ongoing systems review. Mrs. Moore? I guess it's Mrs. Paul. It's okay. Just making sure you're awake over there. Good evening. Before we begin our reviews tonight, I just wanted to give you an update from a request that we had received, is to have the ongoing system reviews available on our website, and so, that is now available. So, to give you the pathway for that, if I can move this. So, on the district website, on our Quality Improvement and Accountability site, there's a link that says Ongoing System Review. When you click, there will be two different years, and so, once you click on 2012, 2013, every program is listed individually, so you don't have to go through each report, and it's the same for 1314.
Where do we get it? Which of the things do we click on to get to the quality?
You go to the district website.
Yeah.
Up here, and then we're right underneath of that. So, for the ongoing system review process, just an update, because it's a little bit different tonight. You'll remember, back at the study session, we looked at the process to look and see what improvements we could make this year. Each program will go through a review, a State of the District report that you've already received, and then a status report. This will be a change tonight, because we have differentiated programs. We have two tiers of programs. Tier one will be the programs that directly impact student achievement. Tier two are the ones that indirectly impact student achievement. And then, next month will be your first month that you'll receive a status report from the programs that went six months ago as well. So, the tier one and tier two programs are here. The ones that are in tier one are the ones that are highlighted in yellow. Tier two is highlighted in green. The tier one programs will follow the same procedure that we have previously. They will come up and give a formal presentation, and we'll open it up for questions. Tier two, the program leads are here at the meeting, but they will not give a formal presentation unless asked upon to come up and do that. Hey, so let's begin. Tonight, we have summer school, gifted and talented, and quality improvement and accountability is tier two, so if you have questions for us, we'll be happy to answer those after the first two. So, I'm going to ask Mrs. Ann White to come join me.
Madam President, members of the board, Dr. Ritter, I really am excited to be here to share with you what summer school has done in the last year. One of the things that we want to look at as an area of improvement, we do a lot of things well, but one of our areas of improvement is to provide a training ground to build the principal capacity to align with district practices, and one of those is the learning model. We've been working for the last two years and will currently work with this year's administrators to help them understand the power of it. Now, I would like to let you know that in 2000, from 2011 until now, we've had a 41% increase in student enrollment in summer school, and that is something I'm very proud of, and it has to do with the appeal of our summer school. If you would, Jill.
From when, 2000, you said?
2011 to 2013, we had a 41% increase in the student enrollment. And again, I feel like that has a direct relationship to their interest in being in summer school, and we've created quite a shift from a child feeling like they have to go to summer school. We've also partnered with community partners to provide a morning-to-afternoon place for the children to have a place to be for working parents, and that's something that we're interested in. If you look at that survey, when we look at persistence to graduation, we have a high graduation level in our summer school, but one of the areas for what I felt was improvement was from 2012 summer school to last year, we had a 10% increase in, from a student survey perspective, that this summer school class helped me as a student. I feel like anything over 5% is significant, and we contribute that a lot to the building principles, training teachers in the Springfield learning model, and last year, our focus was on feedback and success criterion. Another area that we had improvement was teachers make it clear about what I'm supposed to learn as a student. And so, that was something that we were extremely proud of. And if you'll just jump down to the customer satisfaction for teachers, I began instruction by presenting students with clear learning goals. It was 88% said agree or strongly agree in 2012, and it jumped 10%. So, we feel like the Springfield learning model, the training that we do prior to summer school with our newer administrators that are getting maybe a first-time opportunity to lead a building, they're putting together all the qualities that we hope to have with our leadership in Springfield Public Schools and supporting student learning and student success.
Any questions?
The funding for summer school, refresh my recollection, is any of this pass-through money from the state, or is this all money that's from our operating reserves or operating budget? So, there's a specific money that we get from the state? Based on summer school enrollment that we spend on summer school, is that correct?
It's not necessarily a direct dollar for dollar. We don't carve out from the formula, we get X amount of dollars for summer school, and therefore, we spend it all on summer school.
And so, there's no requirement either way of spending all that money or spending less than that money, or, is that correct? Okay. However, if we wanted to increase summer school, then there would obviously be increased cost. We wouldn't get dollar-for-dollar from the state for. Okay. And then, I think I saw, and I've lost this page, about the percentage of summer school that's kind of dedicated to remediation, and the percentage is dedicated to enhancement. And if I, I really don't know where it went, but it seemed like there was a big switch from elementary to middle to high. Is that correct? That elementary, it's a three-to-one remediation to enhancement, and middle and high, it's three-to-one the other way. Is that accurate?
That's fairly accurate.
And I know we, in a previous OSR with the extended learning, we saw some percentages of kids needing the remediation and reading. And only 30% taking advantage of it through summer school. Do we have numbers of how many kids are identified as needing summer school remediation, and how many are taking advantage of it?
Well, what I would like to say is that we go through a very stringent process of looking at who qualifies for that ELP support, not only in the regular school year, but also in summer school. And I would have to defer to Mrs. Moore about numbers. And I would have to defer to Mrs. Moore about numbers, but we are working collaboratively with them in providing space and classrooms, teachers, to provide that support for parents who choose that.
I think one of the things that we've been trying to do across the organization is to work collaboratively with educational operations because it's, summer school is part of the comprehensive approach to helping, helping support that literacy. So there are the 20 hours of extra, 30, sorry, 30 hours of extra dedicated time during the school year, differentiated instruction and support through the guided reading process, and then the summer school support piece. And so we're looking at that combination of pieces. And one of the things that we are noticing is a need for a stronger metric to determine the K2 gaps, that a lot of the metrics that we're currently using, there is some variability in terms of the way the assessments are measured and the way different people read and approach the same thing. So a big focus of our ELP work this year with the dedicated person coming on staff, Jennifer Kaufman in August, has been involved between Mrs. White and Mrs. Kaufman, kind of getting a lay of the land and figuring out what pieces do we have and what pieces are we missing to be able to provide a more comprehensive support network.
Because it strikes me, and correct me if I'm wrong, but it strikes me as that summer school is a wonderful opportunity that we have to catch kids before they get too far behind and to bring kids up in the summer that need that extra attention and...
I think one of the things that, I wish it were as black and white and as simple as that, but when you look at the...
I like things when they're really simple.
Well, and I, and it, and black and white is much easier than a continuum, but, but one of the things that, that schools and sites look at are those individual needs of the child and really trying to make sure that that, that support is personalized. There has to be strong support from home. We're, we're careful to require summer school and tie it to retention because the data and the research on that is not particularly favorable. So the faster the intervention can happen prior to summer school, the better off we are down the road. I don't know if that makes sense.
Well, it does, but, but it seems that we've done a really wonderful job with the enhancement, because you've got kids that are just chomping at the bit to do enhancement in the summer. And part of it is the way that it's delivered in the summer. It's a different delivery. It's a lot more hands-on, a lot more collaborative, a lot more things we talk about that should be happening everywhere, I think. And I think part of it's how it's sold to parents. And so, you know, making, taking that, what we do with the enhancement to remediation, marketing it correctly, selling it as an exciting, fun, summer, you know, block, because I, it seems like we're not getting enough participation and we should be getting a lot more participation.
And I think we're on a good trajectory. When you're trying to manage change like that, you start with the low-hanging fruit. And so last year, a major redesign that I believe Allison, are you here, was spearheaded when Allison was in secondary operations with some differentiated approaches to science that embedded literacy, which is really the direction of where the world is going. And you can call it Common Core or not, it doesn't matter, it's the direction of authentic literacy in the real world. Every single person at that board table has literacy demands that are very content-specific to your coursework. So last year, redesign of the secondary approach, we're just in the process with the K5 adoption of making that switch. So to just do the same that we've always done without some major rework, we don't think will yield us the same benefits. So what we can tell you is that right now, we're in transition, trying to adjust and incorporate those authentic literacy experiences and have that package. But we have new, we have for all students across the district, but we have new, new players in place. And, and an important piece for us was to get a sense of what was already in place, what the gaps were before we just started doing things. So many of the things that you've suggested are a part of the scope of the work for this summer. But I would say we, we would fall short of requiring or tying it to retention based on the, on the research that we've seen.
Any other questions or comments?
One of the things I was going to ask, and I think it goes back to the extended learning program, OSR that we heard, but I guess, I think it is important for us as a board and as a district to know why some families choose summer school and some don't. And I, and, and under customer satisfaction, we see results of what the students said. There might be some value in gauging what parents say. And then there also might be, I think it would be valuable if there was a way to capture a survey of families or, you know, it might just be more personal interviews, but why did you choose not, you know, why, your child was identified for these services, you chose not to, you know, partake, why? Because if it, if there are things that we can address from the district level or even on community partnerships, which I'm really glad to see that that's part of what we're measuring during summer school, there may be a way to really increase that involvement. So, but I'm not sure we really have a handle on why or why not. So that would just be something that...
Well, we do know that, that one of the things that is a struggle in a good way is that people remember with fondness their, the summer of their youth. There is a contingency of folks that, that still remember not starting school till after Labor Day. And so an early start is often problematic and some of those things, you know, let's let kids be kids, they need their time away. So you see a lot of really committed families putting a priority on that time and others that feel equally committed, that they're doing the best thing for their child. So what we've tried to do is build a multi-tiered system that tries to provide support in as many different ways to reach as many different kids and, and not have to totally redesign those families of origin. But, but our goal is support for every child. And what does that look like?
Any other comments from board members?
Thank you. The increase in two years is impressive, that's for sure.
Anne's going to present to a group of superintendents, discussing with them her job. So it's kind of a neat opportunity.
Our next program we have is gifted and to provide maybe some clarity on how students end up in the programs they end up before looking at the data might be helpful. So this was all, provided a short, sorry, flow chart here. So you can see, based on a referral or the idea that we have the district-wide second grade INAT screening, so we go into every classroom, I believe that's like 86 or 92 different classrooms, every second grade classroom, and we administer an INAT as a screening tool so that every child has an opportunity to be screened for gifted, at least at one grade level throughout the district. From there, we go to the evaluation and through WISC and SAGES, we have our three different gifted programs, Wings, Bridges, and Scholars. Scholars process is an application process, which for the sixth, seventh, and eighth graders, and that's an actual matrix of four different tests. So just a little bit more than maybe you may have known in the past about how that works. Do you have any questions just about this little piece?
What's INAT and what kind of skills does it test for?
The Nagliero Non-Verbal Abilities Test is what that stands for. And the reason we, we choose that particular test is because it's a non-verbal test. And so it doesn't, it doesn't matter if you speak English or not, you can take it because it's based on puzzles that we have and choosing the right answer based on a picture. And so it's, it's that type of thinking skill that we're looking for. Regardless of how you do on that in the second grade, even if you're referred, we still take any referral, but this is to pick up those students that may not have gotten a referral from their teacher or from a parent. Sorry. I'm good with this one? All right, so on to key strengths. Some of these you would have read over before, so I don't know what we want to hit on specifically. I do want to draw your attention to the number of students that we are serving right now. And that number's actually increased since we wrote this, we're up to 947. Due to the multitude of snow days that we've been talking about, we actually ended up over the winter break doing more testing and brought our testers in and tested over that break. And so our, our numbers are actually up to 947 from there. When we look at some key opportunities, expand full-time programming would be something that we really want to look at for the future, increasing our referral rates, percentage of students that are actually participating, and I think that's going to break down onto our other screen when you get to that one. And number four is a big one, and the reduction of gifted services in our Bridges program right now. We were at a high of 96, remember, we just had two teachers in that program, two classrooms. We're down to, it's actually 70, we did qualify two students over the break. But it's the reduction in Title I services. And I've written five because it's been five, five schools since we started the Bridges program eight years ago that we've reduced. So those numbers are clear just on the schools that we're no longer serving Title I. Looking at the other end of that, I'd really like to look at just our schools that have high free and reduced numbers and not looking at just those that are considered as Title I schools, but who has the highest numbers of free and reduced students. Any questions on that?
Those are spots you've lost or just those kids would, would qualify for Wings as opposed to Bridges if, are you saying that?
The students would have qualified for Bridges if they were still in a, if the school was still designated as Title I.
Do we have a number of those, of that 30 student drop that didn't then qualify for Wings?
That means that the IQ range would have been in an IQ that was gifted but not qualifying for Wings, correct? And we, yeah, and we actually had those exact numbers and they would have brought us right back up there.
So we tapped at the, I mean, are we at, are we capped at the number of students that we can serve at Wings?
We have not been. We just keep bringing them in.
I guess my question, and one of the things I've always wondered, is why if the state's IQ to qualify for gifted is 125, why does ours continue to be 132?
We only have 11 classrooms over there at the Phelps Building, so when we say capped, we're not capped at a number, we would just be limited on the amount of space that we have.
But we're, but we have a, I guess, we have a higher, we have a higher threshold to, to qualify for those programs and yet you said we still have the ability to serve more kids. So how do we, how do we balance that?
I don't know if we can serve many more.
What is our, what is our capacity at, at Wings or at, you know, Phelps for the, what we would consider the Wings program?
I don't think we've ever reached a, I don't know that it's been at a capacity level. We've talked about a 5% threshold throughout the years of what you serve. The students would be a 12 to 15 per teacher and we are maximizing that right now. We have 19 to a teacher and that's where we are. So we've maxed out is what we're doing, but we've never turned anyone away that's qualified.
Has there any been some discussion about how that might, I mean, I know there's one day that students don't come at all.
Right.
To Phelps, you know, has there ever been any discussion about how that might be balanced to still give teachers planning time and yet still utilize that space where we could serve?
Right. Right now, I mean, as of today, 283 students or is the amount of students we're talking about, we just ran the numbers today that would qualify based on a 125 to 131 that we're not reaching that are in non-title schools. So 283 is that number. To bring that amount of students in is still a maximum amount of number. I don't know, we would have to have more staff, no, no matter what, we, we wouldn't have enough to, to actually serve that many more students. And if you did that, then we would have to offer, like you said, a planning time during the week. Right now, we have no planning time Monday through Thursday, that's why we use the Friday for planning time, because we don't offer specials. There's not art, music, PE to break them out for that timeframe. So that's what Friday's used for. Okay. All right, any other questions about that piece? So student outcomes, based on what we were looking at from last year to this year, where you guys want to start? Thinking skills assessment is what we give in-house to all of our students that go to Wings. And all still in the green. Bridges as well. Communication Arts, this is going to be our scholars' scores, these are the 120 students that we have over at Central. Want to make sure that everyone does look, even though if I show some yellow in there, understanding that proficient is 400, advanced is 500. Our students are all meeting that and exceeding that. So those are the numbers we're looking at for Communication Arts, Math and Science. Science is an area we're going to look at this year. Try to explain why that's in the red. Sixth, seventh, and eighth grade science is taught in sixth grade, all the curriculum in one year. So our students, however, do not take the MAP until they're eighth graders. So they have not had sixth, seventh, or eighth grade science since they were in sixth grade and they take it as eighth graders. So looking at these scores, even though, again, they were all proficient, we are going to actually do a MAP review to make sure that, just some of the terminology, because again, they're all at mastery level, but just making sure that they've gotten some of the terminology they may have missed over the last two and a half years that they haven't had it. Algebra EOCs are right there. When you're looking at sixth graders for the EOCs, which is at a 500, our students there are our highest math students going into the sixth grade, seventh grade, and then eighth grade when they take the EOCs.
But again, this would be, in one year, it was one group of students, in the next year, it was a different group of students. So we're not comparing, I mean, it's been the same concern about MAP and so, I mean...
Different groups, yes, absolutely.
It's hard to look at these two and see any sort of a trend. So, I mean, would, would, would you have information from previous years to know, you know, I mean, it went from, like, science went from 459 to 434?
We have all the years, I mean, they just don't send them all to you guys, but yeah, we have those.
Yeah, I guess, you know, two years of data doesn't show much.
I, yeah, I have the other years too, though, yeah. Goal two, effort referrals, which we've talked more about. And that's just getting in to the teachers and talking more about what gifted looks like, what, what are the characteristics of gifted students, percentage of qualifying students, which again, that number has increased as well since we've done our additional. Our elementary between Bridges and Wings is now at 665 in the elementary, middle school's at 282. So even those numbers have, went to all greens in that area. Redesign the process for students that are state-qualified, which again, Ms. Collins, what you were talking about, what do we look at? We're looking at those students that are 125 and above. And we're in the process of talking, Dr. Hackenworth and Christine Jones and I, and we are in a process of hopefully bringing something to you very soon, is what we'd like to do for redesigning that pro, that whole program. Parent satisfaction is pretty darn good. We're really happy with that. We have great parent support and we do what we can to, to serve kids.
Why no science in seventh and eighth grade?
When I give those scores, those are, we don't have the science under gifted. Those seventh and eighth graders take it at the high school. So they go immediately into the biology classes or, yeah, so our seventh and eighth graders do it Scholars.
Tom, Tom?
Well, I think, I think you pointed it out, but I think our, one of, one of the things I'd really like to see is reaching the kids that we are reaching. And there's budgetary issues, there are space issues, and I think it's going to be a big strategic planning issue for the long run to, to reach those kids because we're wasting talent if we don't have the resources to support them. But you know that. The other thing that, that I think we all know is that, yes, these kids do well on their testing. The question is, are the gifted programs teaching them the skills they need to succeed in high school and after? So do we, I think sometime in the future, we're going to have to look at this cohort of, of maybe Scholars or maybe even the Wings kids and track them for five years and say, have we given them the coping skills, the study skills and all that? As we know, some of them are a different breed, I raised two of them. And, and, and then are we teaching them the right stuff they need to go ahead and succeed in high school and afterwards? So I think that's phenomenally important.
I know Springfield raises very intelligent children, but I was just wondering how our gifted numbers compared to Parkway, to other districts, to a North Kansas City, have you done anything like that?
And I haven't, I haven't gotten that down yet. I will tell you, I met with David Walsh and the State, State Board just last week and we're getting those numbers together as a whole state because they have not been keeping those accurate records.
I apologize, I should have asked you that at the cabinet.
It's all good.
I had it tonight, sorry. I started that. How's this gifted education changed, let's say, in the last 10 years?
In the last 10 years? I can tell you what we, you mean in Springfield or overall? The amount of programs, the different items that we're offering our kids to actually sign up for, the more choices that they have... sign up for, the more choices that they have. The Bridges program, as Ms. Callen knows, is, this is only, it's eighth year that we've had the Bridges program, so we're very proud of that. What's been going on over in the Scholars program? That started out, I mean, it was eighteen years ago, but we only had seven kids then. So the idea that we've moved that, those numbers across the years and continued to grow. Now, that number has stayed because we only have so many classrooms over at Central that we can use, so we're kind of tight there on space, and Central's just tight on space, as we all know. But that program could also use some more, if we had more growth, we could actually grow that program bigger like that. But what the students are able to choose from, I think, is a huge thing, because we want to make this about choice, and our students have the opportunity to choose from a very diverse grouping of curriculum, and that's the most exciting thing, is watching that growth. And we really take it from the kids. And you were talking earlier to Ann about, we want to know what the kids think. Well, that's what we get from the students, is they let us know what classes they would like to take and what they want to do, and that's what we prepare for and make sure those are available to them.
One of the things that I just hope that we're always looking at, because I know this delivery model, you know, the Wings model, I'm sure there have been different things that have changed over the years, but it's pretty much, it's pretty much the way it was.
The one day a week.
The one day a week, pull-out, you know, as, you know, since I've been in Springfield. And I guess I would just ask is, you know, what are the best practices in delivery of gifted education? Because I know you can go to any district and they do it much differently. A lot of them have it right at the home school, where there's a lot of, you know, differentiated instruction, you know, in the classroom. So what are the best practices in delivery of gifted education?
Now, best practices, depending on the size of the district, is also going to be a major player in that. Because, you know, I came from a smaller district where, when you say it's in the building, but it was still a pull-out program. I received my students one day a week, even in a smaller district.
I would say, like, you know, pull-out, push-in, you know, I mean, I...
If you want me to give you the real stats, I can find the real stats for you, but push-in is not the recommended method. Pull-out is the recommended method over push-in, and the recommended model, of course, would be actual full-time programming for gifted kids. And I can get your real numbers on that.
That would be helpful. Yeah, I, I think that's just something we always want to be looking at as a district and as a community, is, you know, people are very tied to that model, and, you know, tied to Phelps and tied to Wings, and, but I always want to make sure that that's the best way to be delivering that education to that group of students.
And again, at a district this size, I mean, it, I, trying to make sure that we're making sure those kids have got peer groups to meet with. And if we're looking at some of our schools that very, have very few students identified, and who are they going to meet with if they don't have that peer group? And doing a pull-out program brings them together with the kids they have the most in common with, and it's least one day a week, as opposed to not having anyone five days a week.
And I think there's the other thing I would ask, is I wonder if there's been any, it kind of goes back to what Dr. Prater was talking about, but if there's ever been any inquiry back to students that have now graduated that were part of the Wings program to say, you know, what helped you, what didn't help, you know, kind of get some feedback from students as they go through their educational process, and, you know, what parts of the education that you received, you know, through Wings carried forth, you know, what was not that helpful, so.
The other pull-out, I assume that's the terminology, is what's the effect on the regular classroom on the days they're gone? So we have to look at the other students too, and what's happening in the classrooms that they have left on those days they're gone.
They should be learning as they would learn the other four days of the week. The day that they're gone is still a regular class day for everyone else, and they're just not responsible for that homework. They're still responsible for the concepts that were taught that day. They're still responsible, if there was a book report due, they still have to turn it in. So school goes on, and, and kids are...
About the dynamics of the classroom, you know?
And I guess, you know, my concern is having had kids in the programs, having kids right now in the program. But I do kind of wonder whether the, the best practice is a smaller program that is more like Scholars program, where it's full-time. Because I wonder with, whether our program was developed this way because of money, because we couldn't do a full program, and, and to give kids kind of a taste of, of gifted education, or whether, you know, we sat down and said, this is the absolute best way to deliver gifted education in Springfield. My guess is it was, it was, let's do the best we can with the money we got and the facilities we have. And, you know, I would like to take a closer look, because, because I think there's an, it seems like there's a need, a greater need to hire up the IQ scale you go, and, and maybe not so much of a, of a need as you, as you just get really smart. Does that make a sense? Because there's some behavioral and social and some other things that are, that are at play there. And, I mean, I do have, as a parent of two kids that are at Wings, I have, I do have a problem with having them pull out on Thursday, and, and there's a social issue that my daughters are going through, because they're pulled from their friends, and then they're put back in their friend, and so, and they miss a music or one of their specials. So I would like to have a discussion about whether, you know, maybe a better way to do it is to, to use that facility for a complete school, where kids go Monday through Friday and, and get that, and then we can, I mean, because we already need to be differentiating instruction for, for very bright kids and struggling kids. And if we're not doing that in our schools every day at every school, then, then we got some issues that are a lot bigger than Wings, so.
We'll be back input. Okay, thank you. For our last, if there's any questions or comments for quality improvement and accountability?
You're supposed to be sitting down.
I'm supposed to be sitting down?
Yeah.
Does anybody want? I would just like to say that I think your department has been very, very receptive and responsive to what I think sometimes can feel, does feel to me as an individual, but, you know, just, we're kind of on this yo-yo, trying to figure out what we want from data and what we need from data. And I think you and your colleagues have been very, very receptive to trying to put that all together for us and make it work. So that would just be something that I would say personally. Sometimes I'm overwhelmed by the data I get, just because there's a lot of it. But the fact that we have that kind of depth and breadth of data is pretty amazing. Anybody else have anything?
Good at giving us what we ask for than responding when we change our minds.
Well, we really appreciate, Cabinet appreciates you putting up with us, too.
Happy to do so.
Cabinet's tough. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Come here, open.
Mr. Wintes on.
Good evening, Madam President, members of the board. Dr. Ritter, it's my pleasure to bring to you a quarterly update on the 2013 Bond projects. The entire report is attached to the board docs, including the financials. And this evening, I'm just going to go through and hit some of the highlights of where we're at on our projects. Starting with Fremont, and this is just kind of a site overview, so you can kind of see how the building, as it's currently designed, will, will lay out there with Fremont on the left-hand side. I don't expect you to be able to read this, but I do want to just point out, what we have is the administrative area up in this section, oh, I'm, sorry, Dr. Prater, in this section, we have the library up front, some project lab area. This would be the kitchen cafeteria and the gymnasium. So you have those very public areas that would get used after hours and things together. And then we have our, our classroom wings throughout. The old gymnasium actually would be converted to some classroom space. So we'll just look at how some of the, some of the design lays out as we look at the exterior. This would be from the northwest, looking at the main entrance of the building, would be the new front doors. This is one of the renderings. We're still, just a caution, we're still tweaking as we go, as they explore materials and costs and those types, so some of this will change. This is actually from the northeast corner, and where this would be the back of the kitchen and the gymnasium area. Your front is, is back up here. This would be from the southeast corner. You see where the classroom wings come out, the gym back here. We're kind of working our way around the building. And here's the old gymnasium and where the old main entrance was. So you kind of see how that building comes together here. As we look inside the building, and this is part of that BIM modeling program that's been used, so once you come in the front doors, this is what we could potentially see as we look into the new library. Inside the library, how it, it would look out, you see a lot of daylighting through this design. And then also, as you look at that courtyard area, where the students would have access off of the library or project lab area, as well as from the kitchen cafeteria, or the cafeteria area.
Scott, are we, are we looking at a FEMA safe room situation here, or just a...
Well, I'll just touch on it now with FEMA. We believe we will hear by the end of this month if it's, if officially we have the FEMA for Kickapoo, which will then allow us to do this through these other projects.
Before you go on, Andrea, you and the staff and the parents all been involved in this?
Absolutely.
It does look a lot like you, as far as the layout and stuff, right? You, okay, just making sure. All right.
As we look at Glendale, here you see basically the, the floor plan. Here's the, the main entrance here to the right. So this is that courtyard area that will be closed in. You'll see expansion of the library area, the serving area coming out, and, and further dining to help with the traffic flow and the congestion in that cafeteria area. Here you can see kind of the rendering. This would be from the main entrance area, so the library's there on your right, and then the cafeteria down here.
So that's where West is located?
Yes, okay. And then this would be looking back to the east, so your administration's up in here, and there's your main entrance. So you have the cafeteria area and the library up there. You can see the challenges with the elevations between the old, with the gym side of the building and where that cafeteria is. So in that courtyard, there was quite an elevation change, and I think that the architects have done a great job with pulling that all together and, and making it look nice, and giving areas for, for students to talk and collaborate as well. As we look at our Hickory Hills project, I wanted to show this site plan. One of the things that happened through the Hickory Hills project with the original project is we shifted the building on the site due to the massive amounts of rock we encountered, as you may recall. And then, as we worked with the city in, in improvements of the road with some right-of-way, our actual property line and our building setback lines were changed. So as we got into our design, this represented the new setback that we have from the street. So one of the designs that we had already been looking at involved angling this as well, as you see the collaboration space here in the, in the four classroom area. So what we're basically having to do is just pull it back a little further with the setback. So that'll, actually, the face here will be parallel to the street. And here you can see basically the rendering of how that potentially will look. As we look at Kickapoo, the main part that we're dealing with right now is the, again, the courtyard, similar to Glendale, but involves more work in the kitchen and the serving area as well. Another phase that, that is actually out now is the mechanical system as well. But as we look at this, you can see some of the collaborative space areas that have been set up to work within this design. I'll show you some of the renderings that they've come up with. And this would be facing to the west, to get my bearings there for a moment. So you have the new serving area down here. This would be towards the auditorium and, and the back there. Then we have, here's an idea of what those collaborative spaces might be along the side. One of the areas that has been added into this design was the staircase to help with the circulation flow. And you can see from the serving area and the cafeteria area, just another example of a potential collaboration space that can be used for students as well. And then the serving area, and this serving area is original from when Kickapoo was constructed, and nutrition services has changed significantly over the years, so this will be a very welcome to that design. As we look at our Sherwood project, here we see a site layout to where, you know, you have Golden. The Boys and Girls Club portion of the building would be right here, adjacent to the gym. Show you some of the potential exteriors. This would be the main entrance to the building. This would be the Boys and Girls Club entrance to the building. See it a little more close up. And then as we look at the design itself, so you have the Boys and Girls Club, the gymnasium area. This would actually be the kitchen, and then your cafeteria commons area, if you will. This design has this project lab here, and then you have the classroom wings. And what we've done is, as an alternate, also including bumping out four of the classrooms on each of the wings and widen it to create some collaboration space in each of the classroom wings. So besides the project lab, they would have that as well. This would be inside from the kitchen and looking towards the front door here, and where the architects are playing with some designs with some beams and columns to kind of give that space some identity. And then this top portion here is looking from the front doors, looking to the back of the building. The FEMA update, well, I just mentioned, hopefully we will hear by the end of this month. We should have something in writing to know that that is all going to come together for us. An update on project timelines. The Fremont project, we're still looking at, getting out this spring. Glendale is currently what we refer to as out on the street right now. We will actually be receiving bids on February fourth. We receive them the evening before and open them the next morning on the fifth. Hickory Hills, we're still targeting for March to get that project out. Kickapoo, we actually have Phase One A and One B out on the street right now. Those will be coming in. Phase One A will receive bids on February tenth, open them on the eleventh. Phase One B will receive on February twelfth and open on the thirteenth. So the February eighteenth board meeting will be a really exciting night for us, as hopefully I'll have three great bids to bring forward to the board. Phase Two will be either into the summer or in the fall by the time we bid that. Pending the FEMA approval, then all the designs for that auditorium would then have to be submitted to FEMA for them to review the plans before we can actually bid it. So there is a time lag there, and then Sherwood would be this spring as well. Yes?
Scott, do you have any early sense of how much interest there'll be in bidding for these? I know that there's a lot on the street. Have you...
There is a lot on the street, and it's just kind of a guessing game at this point. We do know that there are some contractors that really do enjoy working with the schools here. And as you said, there is a lot of work out there, but these are good projects, and so, so we're hopeful that we'll get good interest on it.
And you'll know what winter deadline for submitting those again, for the first round?
Well, for the first one is Glendale, and we'll receive those on February fourth.
And you'll know what points of deadline for submitting those again, for the first round?
For the first one is Glendale, and we'll receive those on February 4th.
Right, is it pretty tough out there, as far as competition?
For construction?
Uh-huh.
It's picking up.
Not that bad yet?
We're trying to put pressure on our architects to not do anyone else's work and to focus on?
That's why I asked, yeah. Good jump there, way to go.
We're holding some off in order to get the three out.
All right, all right.
Yeah, that's what he tells me. As we look at the network infrastructure upgrade and computer replacement update, on the replacement cycle, the completion is at 19%, and the network upgrade completion is at 12%. And there's a link on the website to get into the full updates on what's happening on the IT portion of the bond.
I have a technology question. Ms. Rick, want to come forward? Are we doing PCs, are we doing tablets, or what are you doing now?
It's a combination of items that the principal and we work together to try to replace. We're not putting as many desktop computers back in place, we're doing more all-in-ones. If you look at those, those are the ones that you see on TV a lot. Those devices are all built together, they're actually a larger display with all the unit together. It's a wireless device, so it can be moved around a little more flexible. We're doing a lot of laptops and netbooks, a lot of netbooks, a lot of those.
And the replacement, are we just, are we doing just student computers, are we doing staff and?
No, it's the stuff.
Okay.
Because we had some out there that was thirteen years old.
Yeah.
It's just the master shift.
And so, and with this, you feel like you're going to start out with a good baseline then for a replacement?
Absolutely. And the nice thing is, we negotiated some new contracts with HP. They came out listening to our products, and so we're trying to get those products in. So they're easier to press to service. So again, you take a little risk because it's brand new, but we really feel confident with what we've seen and the way the design and the buildings.
Okay, thank you.
And mine is fifteen years old.
Any other questions from board members? There's certainly a lot of, there's certainly a lot of work that's been going on since April. I appreciate all of that.
I really want to thank the design teams and staff for all their work. They've put in a lot of work, and I think the designs show it. Thank you.
Moving on to items for separate consideration, these are ones that we need to vote on separately tonight, school calendar. Dr. Harrell.
Ms. Callen, members of board, Dr. Ritter. You recall that on January 7th, Dr. Anderson and I presented information items on the calendar for the next school year, as well as the following two years in draft form. I'm here before you, just bringing you the action item on the 1415 school calendar to see if you have any questions and I can help.
Are there any questions? Okay. I'll entertain a motion.
To approve the calendar for 2014, 2015.
Second. Been moved by Dr. Prater, seconded by Mrs. Bush, that the Board of Education approves the calendar for the school year 2014, 2015 as attached. Thank you.
While we're voting, I want to remind Dave that I stepped into Kickapoo before the bond campaign and asked his students to step up and get the vote out, and they rallied and they got the vote out, they knew what was involved for Kickapoo, and Glendale did the same thing.
Got everybody's vote, Mrs. Luton? Okay. Moving on to 8.02 HVAC at Kickapoo.
Good evening. And this is for the commissioning portion of one of the bond projects. Typically, these have just been handled under the contract section in the previous bond. Due to the size of this project and the dollar amount is why I bring it forward to you this evening as an action item. Back in February of 2013, when we advertised for professional services, architects, engineers, commissioning was also a component of that. We received responses from three firms, Airmark Engineering Solutions, Colvin Jones Davis, Malone Finkel Eckhart and Collins. And what we're talking about is the enhanced commissioning portion of our projects. Besides testing and balancing, we do the commissioning. I attached in board docs what's involved in the commissioning, you saw the proposal there for you. Airmark did the commissioning on the Westport building and did a fabulous job there. One of the things I will mention to you is, as we look at the projects, the five construction projects that we have here, three of the projects, Malone Finkel is actually the engineer on, and on the Kickapoo project, Malone Finkel is the engineer on that project, so we don't have the fox guarding the hen house, so to speak. Colvin Jones Davis will be actually the engineer on Fremont. So you will see that during the projects, they're either working on it or will be involved in commissioning as we go through it. But it is professional service, so we did negotiate fee, and the attachment is the proposal, and it is funded from the 2013 bond projects. The recommendation is that the board authorizes a superintendent or his designee to improve Airmark Engineering Solutions for enhanced HVAC commissioning at $96,634 on the Kickapoo 2013 bond projects.
Any questions on Mr. Witten? Is there a motion?
Should I move?
Is there a second?
Second.
Been moved by Dr. Prater, seconded by Mr. Renner, that the board approve administration's recommendation.
I normally don't open the board docs and look at the attachments I happen to tonight, and I noticed that the financial statement was not on there, so I've handed that out. Through December, our property tax revenue was $3.2 million less than the prior year. We did some checking on that, and what we determined was that several banks paid their taxes a little later this year than they have in the past, so that pushed that back a month. And actually, as of the end of last week, we received the first of two January payments. That was for $68.1 million, or $7.2 million higher than the prior year, which puts us $4 million over last year. We still have some room to move because the budget anticipates a growth of about $6.1 million. The end of the January payment last year was just under $18 million, so hopefully we can pick up some of that $2 million with that payment. The sales tax has been a roller coaster this year. In December, we were actually down $339,000 from the prior December, but that still left us up year-to-date about $556,000. Our budget anticipated an increase of $500,000, so we're over budget year-to-date, and in fact, we've received the information just yesterday, I believe, for the, or excuse, this morning, for the sales tax payment for January, and that is up $65,000 over last January. Looking at the financial statement, you can see that the revenue year-to-date is lagging prior year, but because of the property tax, we'll hopefully make that up next month. Another piece of positive news, though, is that the expenditures year-to-date are about 1.7% less than they were at this time last year, and the 1% equates to a little over $2 million, so things are still looking okay. I will be providing the board with a revenue projection and update at the February meeting.
Any questions?
I know when you give us the report on fund transfers, there's no narrative for that. We get a narrative on revenues, but I have not seen a narrative showing the rationale for the fund transfers. I would just like to request a more comprehensive narrative.
Okay, we'll work on that. Can we set possibly a dollar limit, like anything over X number of dollars? I don't know if the?
Will you give us a report that shows transfers at a certain level within your treasurer's report?
It's all, it's all levels, right?
Yeah.
Right, yes, yes.
You want a narrative for each of those?
What's that meaning? Just want to know what, why?
How difficult would that be to?
Well, we'll look at that, you know, some months, like for example, when we do the salary spread in September or October, there are a significant number of transfers generated because, you know, we move people around, even though we approve a total FTE budget, that doesn't mean they all fit in the same places they were in the prior year.
I'm not interested in between salary lines.
That's how that's, that's why this is being moved.
Well?
As always, if?
Can you try to give us some sort of narrative next month, see how that works?
Okay, sure.
If it's to the detail that Mrs. Bush is, you know, asking for, and see how that works and?
Can I ask, Mr. Shortis, if you would, share with us, I gave part of, if the funding formula was fully funded, okay? I said that it would be about $3 million, but that was part of the formula. Could you give the board a good sense of what it would be?
You're going to make me vote from memory now?
Yes, I am.
Okay, there are two areas where the state formula is not being fully funded at this point. One of them is that, under the current formula, we, there's a proration factor, so right now, we're receiving about 93.5% of the amount that is indicated under the current formula. So if we were to receive up to 100%, that would be about $3.7 million additional to the district. In addition to that, though, the state adequacy target has been reduced a fairly significant amount, and if that was at a level where it is supposed to be, we would receive an additional 14-something, point-something million dollars, in addition to the 3.7. So it's 18, $18 million, right.
So basically, and that's that adequacy, it was basically the legislator saying, schools should get this much money to adequately educate students in the state of Missouri. They've not given us that money to the tune of $17 million, and they still want us to adequately educate students in the state of Missouri. That sum it up?
Well, 14 million for that, but yes, that's.
Let me clarify about my request. I'm not asking, when I say a narrative, let's say within elementary tetra, every single item, but what was the reason for the bulk?
Okay.
Okay? I'm not looking for every single position and everything I have, I'm simply saying, this was transferred because some teachers, whatever you were saying, the basic reason behind the transfer.
Okay.
The big reason, not every single item.
Okay. All right, we'll look at that.
So on that function page, that big, the bigger page, because there's other?
Well, the, probably the budget transfers page, we'll show that.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve the treasurer's report?
Should I move?
Is there a second?
Second.
Been moved by Mr. Renner, seconded by Dr. Prater, that the board approves the treasurer's report as presented.
Thank you.
Moving on to routine action items. Is there a motion to approve those?
Should I move?
Is there a second? I'm just a little ahead of our system here. Is there a second?
Second.
Been moved by Dr. Prater, seconded by Mr. Renner, that the board approves each of the routine action items as submitted. Moving on to general consent items, is there a motion to approve the general consent items?
Should I move?
Is there a second?
Richard and I are the only ones awake.
Yeah, that's right. You got a good, got a good dog and pony show going there. Been moved by Dr. Prater, seconded by Mr. Renner, that the board approves each recommendation submitted by the administration of the general consent items.
I'll just note that I was awake, I just wasn't listening.
Uh-huh.
Difference.
I'm getting worn out doing my part here.
With only five of us, and I can't make it?
I would like to make a recommendation, if I may.
Is it germane to the motion?
Yes.
I mean, we've already voted.
No, I just comment after the motion, that when we're doing something that's more non-routine like approving policies, that they're pulled out separately as a separate item to vote on.
Well, that's what the modification to the agenda is for.
You can pull, you can, any board member can request to pull anything off.
And I failed to do that, yes.
Under the information items presented, at the last meeting, we talked about the school calendars, and we're now to the section of public comment on non-agenda items. Just a reminder to our speakers that you have three minutes to speak to the board. The timer will appear at the bottom of the screen, and let me just read our little, "It is inappropriate to address the board about individual students or individual staff members by name in open meeting. If you have concerns about individuals, these concerns should be addressed through the appropriate administrative supervisors, either in the schools or in the district office." Our first speaker is Cynthia Mulhall. Okay? Is she here? Mrs. Mulhall?
I think she left.
It's time to speak? This is the end?
This is the end.
Well, I'm going to call Melissa Talison first. You'll have a chance to speak, but is Melissa Talison here? Is Terry Slattery?
I think they're all three out.
Here.
Oh, guys, I thought we were at the end, I'm working on homework. Can I go first, is it okay? My name is Cynthia Mulhall. I apologize, I am really sorry. My name is Cynthia Mulhall. Thank you for letting me speak again tonight. I hope you are considering the resolution I left for you. I ask you to also pass a motion opting Springfield out of the Smart Balance Pilot Test Assessment. Tonight is another common called Common Core distress call. I disagree that it will improve education or pass on Missouri values. Before Common Core, it was possible to have a workable solution in my school. Today, the decree, or the, excuse me, the degree of secrecy and outright deceit is staggering. Desi talking points are not answers. The curriculum is developmentally inappropriate in the assessments, assignments are morally questionable, and the agenda driven. A one-size-fits-all education for special ed gifted and average students is a disaster that will result in poor education for all and millions of wasted dollars. Common Core has never been used anywhere successfully, so why aren't we saying, "Show me the proof"? Because the proof doesn't exist. This is just one Common Core-aligned DBQ project assignment used in my son's history class that alarmed me. Martin Luther King and Malcolm X, whose philosophy made the most sense for America in the 1960s? I was shocked that he was supposed to write a paper on why he thought Malcolm was a leader and had more sense. I looked at the supporting passages, none of which revealed him as a responsible for his actions, but instead a victim of white, American intolerance and oppression. Bryce said he chose Malcolm X because he taught black people to punch back, and he liked his last name X. Bryce is a special ed student, so what he has taught is absolutely my business. He said he didn't know Malcolm X hated white people and called them devils. He didn't know he was Islamic and believed black people were superior to whites and that the demise of white people was imminent. He didn't know Malcolm said, "Anybody who rapes, plunder, enslaves, steals, drops hell bombs on people is nothing but a devil." Bryce didn't know Malcolm hated capitalism, or he spoke at the militant labor forum sponsored by the socialist workers. All easily found in Wikipedia. Here's the problem, my son didn't know any better, and he wasn't educated, he was indoctrinated. Common Core is very specific about assignments and information. Common Core is very specific about assignments and information they want students to know and teachers to say. This is propaganda and I object without reservation that the public school should not be used to indoctrinate or socialize our children. This is Common Core's persuasive paragraph assignment that my son brought home from Read 180 entitled, "Raise the Minimum Wage." This girl's reasons was food and rent costs are high and rising and low-wage jobs don't support a family. Here's the problem, it doesn't tell both sides. What about the effect it has on our small business? What about massive health cost increases for employees under Obamacare? What about the tons of new regulations, taxes and fees that businesses are burdened with? My son could easily walk away with that point of view. What's to say next time it won't be about child birth control, abortion, alternate lifestyles, global warming?
Please conclude your comments.
Thank you, ma'am.
Do they call the next speaker? Am I done?
Yeah.
Melissa Talison.
Hi, my name is Melissa Talison and I'm here to speak on the effects of Common Core as I've witnessed firsthand with my son. Our son is in the sixth grade and has always been an honor roll student. He has been blessed, or we have been blessed with wonderful teachers over the years and have really enjoyed school. As the 2013 school year began, we could see a complete change in the curriculum. In our evenings, we're filled with much frustration as he spent three to five hours doing homework each evening. When we attended the first open house, honestly, as parents, we were relieved that we were not the only parent as frustrated as the rest of them. For some reason, we are still unclear about, his team at school was experiencing three to five tests per week, while the other sixth grade team did not have to endure such demands. The questions was, what, the question was asked, "Is this a pilot test program of some kind?" And we received no answer. When we expressed our concerns with the amount of tests each week, we were told that they should only have two tests each week and the others were considered quizzes that assess their knowledge. You can call it assessment, you can call it quizzes or whatever you want, but when you put it in the seventy percent test bracket, it becomes a test. My husband and I started to see a complete change in our son. When he came home from school each day, he struggled to find the good in that day. Many evenings were spent in tears and nightly, he was calling himself dumb and stupid. We contacted the school to set up a meeting with our four, with his four core teachers and the principal and the school counselor. This is where we heard about Common Core. We also heard that, that's because he's a boy. We also heard to keep in mind that his grades this year will not appear on his transcript, as if that really matters. At this point, as his parents, we are concerned about his self-esteem, not his grades. I attended my first Springfield School Board meeting, January 7th, because I wanted to see who is making decisions for my son. I wanted, I went to the, your Springfield School Board website and found the district's three primary goals. To improve school achievement, improve the graduation rates, and to ensure effective and efficient use of resources. Might I remind you that in 2001, our government implemented "No Child Left Behind"? Today, if Common Core is fully implemented, it will leave more children behind than what it picked up along the way. With the rigorous stupidity of Common Core, not only will you not see improvement in student achievements, but you will see graduation rates drop. We had the opportunity to listen to Dr. Mary Byrne speak currently, recently, two different times on Common Core. Honestly, when my husband and I left there, we both felt sick to see who was leading the Common Core standards in our country and where our nation is taking our kids. I have copies of Dr. Byrne's PowerPoint presentation that I will leave with you today. And I ask you to please view these and contact Dr. Byrne with any questions before the rally in Jefferson City on February 18th. Please do the right thing and pass a motion to opt out of pilot testing and stop Common Core until the proper testing channels have been proven to work and that they meet the district's, your, your goals that you have set for the Springfield School District. Thank you.
Teri Slattery.
Hello, my name's Teri Slattery and I'm here to speak in opposition of Common Core and its one-size-fits-all standard education policy that assumes every student learns exactly the same. A top-down and centrally-controlled standard will hurt students' creativity and learning. Good education policy realizes that all students have different learning styles, preferences and paces. My son, for instance, he has an IEP in language arts. And I've seen, I've heard numerous, numerous statements said, saying that Common Core does not address the need of special ed. So where does that leave my son in the future? Right now, or he used to be an A-plus math student, but since Common Core, math has come into play, he's struggling. Every night, he struggles and what is this doing for his self-esteem? I mean, the other way was working fine. It's bad for teachers in the sense that they'll have little control over their classroom under Common Core. They'll be forced to comply with standards decided upon by federal bureaucrat. This leaves no room for teachers to innovate or meet the unique needs of their students. Another thing that alarms me is when I do ask teachers or principals, they have no clue. I'll ask questions and they just look at me and it's like, I don't think they have a complete understanding of Common Core either. Also, it's unconstitutional. The federal government should not control education and since education's not specifically listed in the Constitution, the authority over education should be left up to the states and people, which, that's another outright lie that we've been told when we know it's all nationalized. Again, Washington's tried the one-size-fits-all education approach time and time again. Centralized education programs have not worked, they will never work. The quality of education has only declined over the past few decades. So I just ask that you please pass a motion to opt out of the pilot testing as we are tired of our children being used as guinea pigs as a part of Bill Gates' money-making scheme. And Bill is even quoted as saying, "We won't know if this education stuff works yet for at least a decade." You guys are a board and you love and care, we assume, for our students and just, we just feel like, why wouldn't you stand up for that? Using this generation as guinea pigs just isn't gonna work. And I say we need to scratch Common Core, start over and get the input from teachers and boards. That's all I have to say, really. I go pass my time.
Thank you. Do you have to hear there any more speakers? Thank you. Okay, moving on to comments from the board legislative report.
Basically, there's all kinds of bills, of course, but just the main thing is to salute tomorrow, whoever can make it. It's a wonderful opportunity. We had a record turnout last year and so hopefully we'll see the same this year. Good food, good time, but we are the centerpiece, so. That, we have the governor coming tomorrow, I mean Wednesday, yeah, tomorrow. Yeah, he's coming tomorrow, a press conference on, and really, early childhood is his focus during that press conference. It's gonna be at Studi at 11:00. I would be there by 10:45 if you're gonna come. I mean, Cheddon. I was at Studi today. Anyway, be there at 10:45 and he will tour and then eventually have a, I think the conference is gonna be at 11:20, so.
Anything else under legislative report? Anything under future issues? Or other, we'll take those together. You did receive the financial and operations report under separate cover. Just a reminder to do your plus deltas, help us improve our work together as a board. Do you need to go into executive session? I'll entertain a motion to pass.
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, Mrs. Bush. Been moved by Dr. Prater, seconded by Mrs. Bush, that the board meets an executive session to discuss audit findings and personnel matters as provided in sections 610.021, 313 and 17 RSMO. Just remember to use your SPS.